At 6:03. Ms. Tamery, you want to do a roll call, please?
Okay. Member Marion?
Here.
Member Dice?
Present.
President Affeldt?
Here.
Member Ash?
Here.
Member Pats?
Here.
Okay, Ms. Raj for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stare the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the free, just as well.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there's none, thank you.
All right, we have any objections to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. This is a time for public comment on any matters not on the agenda within our jurisdiction. Any public comment?
So I just watched everybody here as the Pledge of Allegiance was, the loyalty oath to the United States was being recited, and I noticed that half of you weren't reciting it. So I'm just sort of wondering, like, why you asking us to recite it if you're not willing to recite it? And then, again, I'll say again, it's not appropriate that the school board has, conducts the loyalty oath because it subverts your charge with having, teaching students creative or critical thinking skills. Because the loyalty oath, the Pledge of Allegiance is a loyalty oath, it's my country, right or wrong, it's I will be faithful and loyal to my country regardless of what my country does. And so that's a loyalty oath, that's the antithesis of critical thinking, and I don't think that you should be setting that example for the students, especially since you yourselves don't even say the oath. So, I mean, it just seems we should dispense with it, we don't, there's no legal requirement to do it, and it does more good, or harm than good, and the final coup de grace on this is that you yourselves aren't saying it, so I think we should stop doing that. Now I'd like to give something to the school board member Marion, school board member Pats, and also to the superintendent, and it is the June 2012, the teacher's resolution, when the teachers here in Emoryville, 93 percent of them expressed a vote of no confidence in our former superintendent, Deborah Lindo. And I also have the change.org letter from 73 parents, guardians, and citizens urging the school board to have a forum whereby we could discuss the wisdom of whether or not we want to close Annie Yates as we were promised in the lead up to Measure J, which was the bonding measure that permitted us to build the Center for Community Life. So we were promised a forum, a public forum, to discuss whether or not we collectively, the people of Emoryville, want to close our elementary school, and we were never given that forum, the school district reneged on that promise, and then a letter was written by, signed by 73 of us to you, asking to please allow a forum, and that letter was completely ignored, utterly ignored, by the board, as was the teacher's resolution from, both from 2012. The teacher's resolution was a vote of no confidence in the former superintendent, and that was completely and utterly ignored by the board. And the reason why I'm bringing this up now for the three of you is because you weren't here when that happened, and you need to know the history of this district so we can't, so we don't make these sort of mistakes moving forward in the future. So I'm going to pass this out when I'm finished speaking for your ratification, and I'll give one to the three of you, and I think this should be kept in the, I found out also that these documents are, were never, are not in the district archives, which is surprising and sort of shameful. I mean, I, a document signed by 93 percent of the teachers, I think should be in our archives.
You have a minute.
Say again?
You have one minute.
Okay. So regarding the teacher's resolution, this is, it's not my opinion that the district and the school board ignored the teachers when they, when they sent this resolution to this board. Rather, it's the opinion of these teachers themselves, and specifically Mark Davis, acting president of the Emory Teachers Association, in June of 2013, a year after the resolution was, was given. He told me and my readers on my blog that no one from the district, including no school board members, had done anything whatsoever regarding this, the resolution. And so that's, you know, it's a shameful, terrible period in our history. I brought this up before, before the three of you came to the district. Mr. Affeldt specifically has said that he is innocent because he was not here, he wasn't on the school board in June of 2012, instead he was on the school board in July of 2012.
Three minutes are up.
Thank you. And, but that's not the problem, the problem is the ignoring for a year and a half. So here's the documents. There's the teacher's resolution. And here is.
Do we have any other public comment? Yeah, please. Well, you gotta come up and identify yourself. Okay. Just, just, people at home want to, want to hear your questions, so identify yourself, please, and get it on the record.
Doug Cast. I didn't quite understand, was it about the closure of Annie Yates so that we can move up to this new site?
Thank you.
This is a time for comment, not question.
Oh, okay, okay, then I'll ask, I'll ask later, I just want to make two points. First of all, I really wanted to point out that there's two pedestrian walks leading, two pedestrian walks leading over to, leading over to the school, and I've noticed that cars do not stop, and our students do use those pedestrian walks. One of them is right near the Arizmendi Bakery, there's a thing that you push and you walk across, cars don't stop. And they don't stop for me, a lot of times, and you know, as you know, driving is a habit, right? So we can have a child out there getting hit by a car. And there's two pedestrians, there's another walk further, closer to the Pack and Save. So I think there should be a police officer there and giving out tickets to protect our children. The other thing I wanted to say was I, in regard to the pledge, I agree with you that when people stand up, they should recite the pledge, otherwise it's meaningless. But I disagree, sir, respectfully, that about your point that we're leading a bad example or critical thinking, I'm not quite sure on that, but my point being that none of us are perfect, okay? We're striving to be perfect, all right, and when we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, we're talking about, in my understanding, we're not perfect human beings, but this is our goal, to show our loyalty. I'm not, I haven't shown perfect loyalty myself. President Obama has never showed perfect loyalty, I'm sure, he probably admitted. Okay? So, okay, I respectfully disagree with you, sir. One last point, I really appreciated Mrs. K. Murray's cooperation in giving me information on student progress at Emory, in our, pupils in our schools here in this district, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cast. Mr. Wa, did you have a comment as well?
Want me to talk to this? Good evening. Good evening, board members, Dr. Rubio, Ms. Tamery. I'll admit I'm a little bit nervous at the moment, so I'm gonna just try and slow down and relax.
Okay. Can you introduce yourself for those watching at home?
My name is Malcolm Wa, I'm one of the first grade teachers at Annie Yates. And I'm, it struck me that I've never seen the end of a board meeting. The few times, the few times I've stayed late, I've still left before they're, they've got over, so I've got an impression that they go on forever, and I'll try and be briefs. I hope I'll only need, like, three or four minutes. Do I have a maximum, do I have a?
You have three minutes?
Three minutes, okay, okay, then excuse me for being really straight and blunt. I want to put on your radar an issue, which I've already explained to you, John and Lisa, and it has to do with climate change. It's something I expect you just sort of to take in at the moment and then think about later, but because you're the decision-making body for the district, I think it should be on your radar. I just want to let you know about some reading that I've done and something I'm concerned about. I want to update you, I think, update you basically on the state of the climate, just two basic, two items. One is the condition of the Arctic and the other, the condition of the sea ice in the Arctic, and the other is about a greenhouse gas, methane. So very, as quickly as I can, first the sea ice. About 10 years ago, I did, I read a handful of climate science books, got moderately concerned, put them on the shelf, went back into the classroom. Very recently, I came across reports from research expeditions that are reporting about the accelerating rate of the Arctic sea ice disappearing. About 10 years ago, the projection was from the main climate body, the IPCC, that the sea ice would be completely gone, at least at the end of the melt season, roughly by the end of the century, about 2100. The same year they made that projection, it took a dramatic dip, and now the consensus is that the Arctic will be ice-free this year, if not this year, next year. When I found that out, that's an observation, they're recording the amount of sea ice loss, that shocked me, that scared me, that told me that the rate is accelerating, they were off by something like 80 years on the projection. That's the first point. Second point is, this past summer, Russian, a joint Russian-US research expedition that's been studying the huge subsea continental shelf in the Arctic, north of Russia, the east Siberian Russian shelf, is pluming methane. Two years ago, they were observing direct pluming, and this past summer, they've seen it greatly increased. That is also very worrisome because methane is, on the short term, something on the order of 100 times stronger greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. Putting those two things together makes me think, and I'm, I have a background in biological science, and I've done some reading, otherwise I'm a first grade teacher, but from what I've read, putting those two things together tells me that it is possible that we may see dramatic change much sooner than everyone expects or would like to believe. Since that's a possibility, it should be on your radar. I have no idea how you plan or prepare, I don't even, I'm even not sure what I'm, I haven't oriented myself to it, but that's why I'm here, is to have, to put that on your radar as a possibility, that it's something you'll have to deal with as the governing board of the district. So what I've got for you, since I know it's just a huge thing, I've got as mainstream a media, a piece of summary article that I could find, not arcane and full of graphs, but a journalistic piece, which I'll give you, which you can take and look at and then look into further. And unless there's any questions at the moment, I'm, I feel like I've discharged my conscience or my duty to let you know this.
Well, thank you for, for coming here and raising the issue, and, and continue to let us know as you think about it and percolate and bring it into your classroom and suggest how, you know, amongst your colleagues and the district staff, how we can think about bringing this into the curriculum. I think that's, we appreciate the, your time.
John, if I could respond to that, this is the first issue that has come up for me that I am not bringing into the classroom. I, I can't, this is the first thing that has come up for me that I cannot address my students about. I've always felt good about if a child asks something, as long as it was not in the category of you need to ask your parents, I could answer it, I would address it, including, we're all mortal, we're not going to live forever, which is a scary thing for all of us to deal with, and particularly at this six, seven, eight-year age, but this, I realized, was something, I now have a, I now have a belief that I can't share with my students, so I'm not, I'm not going to share it in the classroom.
A sobering thought.
I'm sorry?
A sobering thought, thank you. Not really, at this time, we're, we're just taking public comment. All right. Yes, we're happy to, happy to entertain questions, emails are on the website or catch us on a break. Any other public comment? Okay. We're going to move on to item E, which is reports. Do we have a CSCA report? ETA report? Our student representative is not here, so we will skip the student representative report. The superintendent report?
Good evening, everyone. Excuse my voice, I have a bad cold. I mainly want to report out on the two days of visioning that we had last Friday and Saturday. We had a group of almost 25 teachers, parents, community members, some representation from the university level, higher ed, worked very hard over two days to grapple with some big questions regarding what they believe the direction and the focus of the school district should be in order to create a vision statement that could come to the board for your consideration. It was like cooking with 10 people in one kitchen, it was very difficult, and, but it was very worthwhile. So I just want to share that I think everybody was very tired and put a lot of thought and energy into that, and I appreciate all their time. It was the first time, I think, the teachers had come to an event where they weren't being paid, we weren't paying everyone on a Saturday, and they just, people really gave their time for our students in our school district, so I just publicly want to acknowledge that. So that's my report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, superintendent. In terms of a board's president report, I don't have anything extensive, this is my first board president's report. Other than to, to say we've got a full year in front of us and a lot of things going on, but I think my own personal priorities are, are to make sure that we work on visioning, do a good job with our engagement in developing our annual update to the LCAP, and working on our implementation and design for the ECL. So that's, that's where, that's where my personal priorities lie. I think the visioning is, is a good beginning conversation, we need to take that out now and broaden it and run it by the community, and see what folks think, and, and buttress it, and, and really build some ownership around it for where we want to go going forward. And, and the visioning piece that, I'm glad Dr. Rubio's bringing, I think it fits in like a glove with the LCAP and our need to develop, you know, really three or four core priority areas that we want to be working on in conversation with our community, and, and scoping out the strategic plan for how we're going to do that over the next few years. And then finally, we, we all know we're slated to be moving into the ECL next year, so I think we're all paying close attention to how, how all of this conversation around visioning and in, in our district priorities expressed through the LCAP fit with our plans to build a full-service community school. All right. Moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that members want to pull from the calendar?
Board President, there is one item that we need to pull, we need to pull the minutes of the regular December 10th meeting, because we noticed that there was an error we want to get corrected.
Okay, and you want to do that now, so we need to pull it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, well, I was going to pull number two, because I noticed a few errors myself. And I had... I had some questions on number three. Mr. Baker's here, so he could probably answer those. So I would pull two and three, any other items? No, okay. So why don't we approve items one and four? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, the second was?
The second was Mr. Marion. Can we have a roll call, Ms. Tamery?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes.
So item two, why don't you start, superintendent?
The item we wanted to correct it was item number seven, next to Superintendent Finance Committee, it says Dice Affeldt, and it says second Wednesday, and that should, at 4:45 PM, that should read the fourth Wednesday.
Okay. That sounds correct. My first point on the minutes was a question about when we, when we actually did the... Certification of the results of the election. Did we do that? I, I thought we did the certification after Member Marion was sworn in. Where is that on here? That's E1.
I, I think we had to do that before with the existing board members.
Okay. All right, yeah, that was, that was a question more than... We'll wait, so we can... And where's the swear, where's the swearing in? Now, see, that's, that was my problem, the E, the administration of oath, is before the E1. So we did the certification before Member, any of us were sworn in, including Member Marion, but it's, the minutes seem to reflect that the...
We'll go ahead and reverse those, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was my point there. Secondly, after Member Marion was sworn in, I would, I don't think it's correct to list Member Dwin as not present, because he's no longer on the board at that point, so I would just...
I, I was directed to do that by the California School Boards Association. Yes. They, they informed me that was the correct way to, to list.
Okay, if you've checked, then I'm going to go with that. It seems odd to me to, it seems unfair to Member Dwin, claim him as absent when he was no longer on the board at that moment, but I'll go with that. The motion for Member Dice to be vice president was made by Member Ash, not Member Dice herself. And it was seconded by me, that's correct, but the motion was made. It's number two. No, Ash.
Ash.
Joy Ash made the motion. I seconded. Similarly, I'm not sure about this, but I don't think Member Marion moved himself to be the county rep. I thought that was either Member Pats or Member Ash. It could have been me, even.
I think it was you.
It was you.
Okay, all right, yeah, I just know it was Member Marion. So, so I should be the move-in for number four there of electing Don Marion as county rep. And those, those were my edits, any other edits?
No, I just wanted to ask the board, one of the members, just who came in for the 6:30 approval of parcel tax committee applications arrived, and I know another one has to be somewhere, and I just, we didn't change the schedule because we know that both of them would be here at the same time or before 6:30, so we're, we have a little bit of a timing issue, so I'm not sure if the board would be willing to allow us to hold up for a moment on the ratification list questions, and could we possibly move to the discussion item, action item number one, since we know one of the community members has to be somewhere?
It's fine with me. Let's move this one and pass it, and then, and then address it formally. So if there are no other amendments to the minutes of the December 10th board meeting, do we have a motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
I'd move adoption of the minutes as amended.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Tamery, you want to do a roll call?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. Okay. So I think we have a, do we have a motion to hear item? What item is it?
G1.
G1, approval of parcel tax committee applications? Now, out of order?
I'm having mute problems, I would move to bring that item forward.
Oh, second.
Okay. Just to buy acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Impose, no, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, the purpose of this item is to have, this is a middle of three applications for the vacancies on the Measure K, parcel tax committee. We have two of our applicants here in the audience this evening. G1. Okay. So one of our applicants that we have is John Bowders, who's here tonight, this evening with us. We have, Miguel, right, correct, Miguel Dwin is another applicant, and we have Lisa Nelback, or is it maybe Lisa Mary Elizabeth?
Mary Elizabeth is my real name, but I go by Lisa.
Okay, Mary Elizabeth. Mary Elizabeth Nelback, or Lisa Nelback, is with us this evening. So we have three applicants to be on our fiscal oversight committee for our parcel tax, and we thank you for your applications.
Okay. Is there any discussion about any of the applicants?
Are we voting on them individually or as a group?
I think we should vote on them individually.
Okay.
But do you have an opinion?
My preference is individually.
My question was, were there any other applicants that we received for the openings?
No, that was it. We had some of the applications come in for another district committee, but I believe this was it for this committee.
Okay.
I just had a question.
Yes.
So, and I know we were notified in October about the resignation for one of our, or maybe not even October, this was recently.
December 31st.
December 31st, right. So I'm, for one, really glad to see that we're able to have applications, as the district has put those applications out and received, so received the good number back because we actually need three, correct? So I'm just really glad to see that we have interest in the parcel tax committee, which we have had great success with having people outside of the, oh, that's right, you just reminded me, that's exactly it. Our chair actually just stepped down, correct? So I think that's really amazing to have such interest in the parcel tax committee. So I'd like to, if possible, maybe hear from them if we get a chance to do that for those who are present this evening, maybe?
Maybe we can have it be part of the public comment, period on the side?
Or we can just ask them, talk, introduce themselves, people's names and things. I've met Lisa, who I had no idea was Mary Elizabeth as my mother is too, so it's pretty neat, I didn't know that. But yes.
As the board's preference, they come up now and say something before the...
Let's see if there are other comments or thoughts or questions. Okay. Since you're closest to the mic, Ms. Nelback?
This is my first attending one of these meetings. Glad to meet you all. I'm Lisa Nelback. I live at 46th and Adeline in the View 46 Building for the last two and a half years, and before that I was living on 63rd Street, also right around the corner from here. So I've been in the Bay Area for a long time. I've been a scientist, I'm a biochemist, and work at Children's Hospital of Oakland Research Institute, but I'm close to retirement. I've also recently joined the Emeryville Community Organic Garden and have become more active in the community. I'm a member of Ashby Village, which is a whole East Bay group involved in having seniors be able to age in place in their homes, so I'm a very active volunteer that way as well. I've a long history as a teacher of music and biology. In my, I raised two children following my husband around from one academic job to another. So it wasn't in this community, but I've been very involved in arts and science education and very interested in the continuing development in our schools of what has been unfortunately cut out of a lot of budgets in the past. So that's one of my reasons for wanting to serve.
Any questions for Ms. Nelback? Okay, thank you for that presentation and for your willingness to serve.
Good evening, my name's John Bowders. I live in the Bessler Loft Building at the corner of 40th and Harland Street. I've lived here for almost two and a half years myself. I'm the Policy Director at Housing California. I would identify myself as an anti-poverty advocate. Spent about eight years as a housing and civil rights attorney in Chicago, and I work here now as the Policy Director at Housing California, which is a statewide nonprofit that advocates on behalf of people who experience homelessness and the service providers who do that work. I have a little bit of a background in education. And during my time in Chicago, I also served as a tutor to law students and ran one of Chicago's finest, as I like to say, finest law student internship programs. I share Lisa's passion for the arts. I believe that, I'm not very old, but it's striking to me that in the short period of time since I left school, 15 years ago since I went to college, that you can find that many schools these days don't offer arts, music, and other electives to students. And so I'm mostly interested in making sure that our school district preserves those opportunities for students on top of the foundational studies we offer them.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bowders? All right, thank you for your presentation. Any public comment on this item?
For one thing, I guess this is to the Secretary to Lisa Tamer. The public packet is here, I was looking at it, and these people's personal information is readily available. That, by all rights, should be redacted, you know, telephone numbers, addresses, that sort of thing. I mean, for public consumption, you should blackbar that. I mean, ethically, I think that should be done. That's my opinion. You know, internal documents, of course, you don't need to, but for public consumption, you should have an expurgated version so people's, you know, personal information isn't made public. I would like to talk briefly here about Measure K. We, of course, I guess we're finalizing the Measure A parcel tax period and exchanging it for Measure K. I'm not sure exact, the exact scheduling for that, but I'd like to remind everybody here and everybody here that the taxpayers, or the voters, I should say, passed Measures A twice, passed easily. It's something that the people of Emeryville really wanted, and the language of Measure A, both Measures As, were very similar to Measure K. And in that language was a desire to have a music program here at Annie Yates Elementary School. And so we voted for that. We paid for that with our taxes, and we didn't get that, so people here should know that. We didn't get our music program. And so anybody that wants to run for the, you know, the parcel tax, what's the name of the position? It's called the Parcel Tax Committee, should be aware of that. So that's a problem we have to fix. So everything that we voted for, you have to make sure that everything that we voted for, the list, we actually get because we didn't have that last time, and there wasn't good enough oversight. And in addition, the Measure A Committee was not meeting as per state mandated regulations. We, the committee didn't meet as they are required to, and that's a huge problem. You know, we have to do at least the minimum state requirements, and I'd like to make sure that the school board and the district and superintendent make sure that that happens this time around. And specifically, I want to make sure we get our music program this time. We voted for it, so I, you know, I expect to see our music program this time. We voted for teacher retention. I want to find out how, you know, how that is being implemented.
Three minutes is up.
Thank you very much. How many minutes?
Three.
Okay. I would like to find out about teacher retention, how that money's being spent. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item?
Teacher retention need, probably?
Yeah, again, we're happy to talk to you offline. The, do we have, I think we're ready to move to moving the individual candidates? Do we have a motion on our first candidate up, which is Mr. Bowders, I believe?
I'll move that we approve Mr. Bowders' application.
I can second.
You want to do a roll call, Ms. Tamer?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Felt?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, Mr. Bowders. Mr. Dwin's application is next. We have a motion on Mr. Dwin.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Felt?
Yes. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Nelback.
I'll move we approve Ms. Nelback's application.
I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Felt?
Yes. All right. Ms. Nelback is gone, but we welcome her and appreciate her willingness to serve. Okay, we are back to the consent item, the ratification list, and I just had a few questions for Mr. Baker. Some of this is informational for me. If you could explain what the East Bay MUD reapplication to reduce connection fees?
So the application that went in...
And the sewer line replacement.
Okay, sure. So the East Bay MUD application, the documents, the documents, the, the documents were submitted to East Bay MUD with what's we call the full buildout. If you recall, there's a Phase II project, which is a building F, which should have the district enrollment crease from 850 to 1200. Sometime in the future, we would build that building, and the site was entitled through the secret process for that full buildout. We're not building that building now, but the application went into East Bay MUD with that, with that full buildout. Because that was the, and I think the thought at that time, this was about a year ago, was to go in with that, the front, the calculation included the fully entitled project. So the calculation, which is based on occupancy, included 1,200 students, the capacity charge. That building F is not being built now, and it may never be built. The idea is when it would be built, that at that point you would pay East Bay MUD increased capacity, not now. So the charge here, which was nominal actually, was I think maybe $1,500, was to resubmit the East Bay MUD application with, to reduce that number, resulting in savings to the project of over $500,000.
Money well spent.
Yes.
Okay. And the sewer line replacement?
So we had, we had wanted to replace the sewer line that goes, this is the line that goes on 47th Street through the city of Emeryville. We wanted to reuse, I'm saying reuse, that line. There was, the idea would have some project savings. However, the city's communication with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the history of the sanitary lines in the city, the Water Quality Control Board would not approve that. They said, you've got to put a new line in. So we had to redesign that line and also resubmit our application, our encroachment permit for the sewer replacement to the city. So these are the design fees to do that work.
Got it. And the $54,400 for the architect is, as you note, about a half of the, it's over half of the $100,000 budget line for architecture, engineering, contingency. These things are hard to predict, but do we have any reason to suspect that we're going to need another $50,000 or so in architecture?
I don't think so. These, again, that is the total for all these items, and these items are a collection of, all this work really has taken place over the last nine months as we finalize the project. The only real work for the design team remaining is construction administration between now and June. So I don't anticipate we would, we would have much of that. I mean, these are design changes. The single largest part of this has to do with adding the pool and some other things, but I don't anticipate that we're going to have very much of this, and I think the remaining $46,000 in the contingency will be adequate.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Do we have a motion to, we're on ratification on the consent item? Do we have a motion?
I'd move approval of ratification list as presented.
Second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Felt?
Yes. Okay, we are through the consent calendar, and now we're on to discussion items under G. We've just already taken care of G1, the approval of parcel tax committee applications. And we're on to the audit report. Superintendent, you want to introduce our presenter?
Yes, thank you. The purpose of this item is to secure the board's acceptance of the 2014 independent audit report. We have representatives tonight from the company that helps us, and I'm sorry, I did miss your name coming in.
Thank you. I realize that the audit report is a very thick document. I'm really here to answer questions for you and share just a couple highlights from that document to draw the board's attention to what I believe is some of the most important aspects that you can look at in an audit report. If you would draw your attention to page 64, it's a really good summary page of the results of the work that was done on your behalf. We do look at three different areas. One is the financial statements, another is federal awards, and the third would be state awards. So there's compliance audit that we do for federal and state, and a financial statement audit for your financial statements overall. For each of those, we issued an unmodified opinion. That's the best type of opinion. That's what you'd be looking for when you open your audit report, but no modifications to be made to a standard opinion. And you'll also notice on the right-hand column, there's lots of Xs next to the "no" and "none reported." That's what you'd be looking for. We had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no items of non-compliance related to state or federal compliance to bring to your attention. In fact, behind this little summary, you'll see a bunch of blank pages that say, no matters were reported. We had no findings to bring to your attention regarding state, federal compliance, or the financial statements overall. In fact, the financial results that we've given our unmodified opinion on are the same financial results that you've previously approved through your unaudited actual package back in September, and we had no modification to that data at all either. So somewhat of a bland report, but the type of report you'd like to see when you open up and look at your audit report. I'd like to answer any questions that you have of me, maybe about the audit process or the audit report or the results that I've shared with you.
Member Dice?
Well, I, yeah, thank you. I do appreciate that there's nothing there. I mean, that tells me that staff, even with the number of changes we've had in administration, have been able to weather the storm of change, even as it relates to even the reporting changes in terms of providing certain documentation as relates to federal and state funding. So, and even student accounts, which we've always seen something, you know, a question mark or something there. So we have a tremendous staff, even as thin as things are at times, it's really great to hear that, and even for, I think even the Child Nutrition Fund, I mean, even those kind of areas. So really appreciate the great news. Made it really, this is the first, I've never sat here and heard that, so I just want to thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Your team is doing an exceptional job, and I got to tell you, we do a lot of presentations this time of year. We had 15 board meetings last night. And I got to tell you, we do a lot of presentations this time of year. We had fifteen board meetings last night that my team had to get through. And they're not all as, as easy to do, and the news is not as great as it is here. So, your team is doing an exceptional job.
That is good to hear, very good to hear. Other comments or questions? Member Dice still, she's been around the longest. Can't contain herself after the audit report. It's unusual, yes. Someone, I've never seen someone so excited about an audit report. I did have one question on the, on the letter to the board on page four. You identified an, a uncorrected misstatement in the amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Can you explain what an uncorrected misstatement is and what that, what that was about? And what, what, does that mean we should correct it? What are, what are the next steps that flow from that?
Again, so-
Didn't sound good.
Yeah, it, it really isn't bad, and I want to make sure that we're, we're clear about that. Through the audit process, we want to make sure that anything we find related to the books and records or the timing of when things are recorded in the financial statements is brought to your attention. And so, we found that through the auditing process, that the timing of when some transactions related to interest income on some of the accounts was recorded, could have been recorded in a different time period. And so, because of that, we wanted to bring your attention to that. We accumulate the information, we look at it, and we say, "Is that material to the financial statements? Does it affect our ability to rely upon the financial statements?" And the answer to that is no. But we want to include it so that you have full transparency to anything that we found through the audit process. So, again, from our perspective, it wasn't something that created any risk. You see, we have no findings or recommendations in relation to it. Sometimes the timing of the information that you get from third parties inhibits you from being able to record a transaction in the proper accounting period. So, this is, again, nothing was wrong. It just should have been recorded in the current year instead of the subsequent year.
Got it. So, not material is-
Correct.
The basic bottom line on that? Yes.
Can I draw your attention to page forty-nine? Can you go over, because to me, ADA is the lifeblood of this district, and I'm curious how we had an ADA of special ed of one. Does that represent a student not attending our school? Or does it represent the total students who meet the federal criteria?
I don't know how many students are actually enrolled that qualify for the line item that are required to be reported as special education. We'd have to look back at the records to determine that. But I will tell you, this is the amount of attendance reporters. So, you could actually have more than one student who make up this individual population. But when you look at how many days they actually attended, you could have one that attended thirty, one that attended fifty. When you put it all together, it represents one average daily attendance. But we'd have to look back at the actual attendance records to see how many students were enrolled that qualified for that.
Again, I'm not, I guess, let me, one seems remarkably low. And so, I understand the, how ADA, how the calculation works. But I would hope that of the, I think it's thirteen percent of our population that has an IEP, between those, I have to do math in my head, fifty-two kids, I'm hoping that together, they attend more than a hundred and eighty days. And so, that's why, again, I'm asking why, how we came up with the one.
Can I, can I?
Really a question for Superintendent or Ms. Dr. Steele?
Yes, and it may be because of the blended program that we're running. I'm wondering if ours, and it could be in a data classification issue of how we're coding those students because they're not in a separate special, a dedicated special ed classroom. That's my, my hunch, but I'd have to, I'll have to dig deeper.
Well, I, I would hope, I, I agree with Member Pats. I'm sure we have more than one individual student who's been identified for special ed. Because I know my son was beginning speech and language services, and he's graduating this week from, from the program. But last year, he, he was one. I know we have more than that. But it is-
He apparently needs to approve his attendance.
Yeah. He went every day.
So, he's one.
Yeah, right. He, but it's a fiscal question, too. I mean, I assume we're getting more, you know, federal dollars and state for special ed than one.
I want to clarify, many of the students, what you're referring to, are actually included in transitional kindergarten through third, fourth through sixth. The funding rate from an ADA standpoint is the same for each of those students. And so, just because they have an IEP doesn't mean from an attendance standpoint, they would be included in the state's form under special education students. And I, and I think that's probably what's causing the, the question about that.
Right.
Majority of those students, if they don't have county office, if they're not participating in county office programs or other independent programs, mostly are included within fourth through sixth, seventh, eighth, you know, whatever actual grade.
So, is that the non-public school place, kind of placement?
That is an exceptional line, yes. So, that would be a different line that comes outside the classification. In the district's Period Two Report of Attendance, you'd be able to actually take a look at that and get the specific answers to, to your questions. But those students are mostly reported in these other categories.
So, so that, that's what I originally asked, is this could represent one student that does not attend one of the district's schools that we're still funding? And we, so then we get their ADA. So, okay, that would make more sense. It still seems low to me, but I like it.
It would definitely be more than that. But I was thinking, when I saw that, I thought more about our, our model change. So, they're in the normal or the regular classroom, and we have pull-in, pull-out services. So, it's the commu-, I forgot, I'll kill it, the small community, what is, what is the model we went to? So, it's probably, they're under, thank you, learning center model. And so, this may be one student who's actually not part of that model. That's why, that's how I called it. It's the same as what you're saying, that this is part of, you know, there, every student is in those clusters, and we may have one student who, for the balance of the year, is probably not part of that learning center model. That's what I saw, but that's just my take.
Yeah, I would be concerned if we're I, I'm still confused how we're counting this kid. I was much more comfortable thinking it was a kid who does not attend.
And we have more than one. We got more than one student who's, we definitely have more than one who's at a non-public school, I mean, that we have out, so.
I would assume so. I would assume we have quite a few, and, all right, well.
I have a question, if I may. I noticed, on page four, you, there's a statement at the bottom that the increases or decreases in the net position of the district over time are indicators of our financial, whether or not our financial position is improving or deteriorating. And I noticed in your highlights on page three, that our financial condition has decreased during the thirteen, fourteen fiscal year. So, our total net position decreased by forty percent. And then I, I just want to make sure I understand this. So, and then the second highlight is that the expenses were more than current year revenues by about two point six million. So, that, that, that's just a simple, we've spent more than we had coming in issue? I'm assuming. I'm just asking for clarification. Was that typically how I should just read that?
Yes, but I want to make a couple of, so, so number one, this is the management and discussion analysis that's actually written by staff, not by the auditors. So, this is, this is your management view of your financial statements. The point I want to make on that is, right now, in this particular section, is talking about your overall financial statements, which include all of the long-term liabilities and all of the capital assets, so it's not the fund financial statements. And so, you do see sometimes some big swings because of things like depreciation expense. That's not recorded. There's no cash that actually flows out, and it's not recorded at your fund financial statement. So, yes, it is saying that the financial position of the district has decreased, but that's the overall financial position when you look at all of the long-term liabilities, the capital assets.
Okay, thank you.
So, when you issue debt, that number goes down because you have additional debt that's been issued.
Okay, any other questions of our auditor? Is this an action item to, to accept the audit?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes.
Timmer is shaking her head, so it sounds like it is. Any public comment on this item? Dora Sue, please, come forward.
I just want to add in the comment about the question on page forty-nine, the ADA. The number one, there is actually one special ed kid that attending the MPS. The way with the LCFF right now, the way that we report the ADA data is actually from now on, with all the students on the special ed, unlimited with the other regular students. So, the one that you saw on page forty-nine is for one kid that attending MPS.
MPS is non-public school that, that, for those at home, the student is not, has special ed disabilities warranting a non-public school placement because the district can't properly service the student. Okay, that answers that. Any other public comment? Do we have a motion to accept the audit report?
I move to accept the audit report as provided this evening.
I'll second.
Roll call, Ms. Timmer?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Miriam?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Thank you, yes.
President Athel?
Yes. Okay, thank you for your presentation and, and your service.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
We're on to item number three. The Resolution eleven regarding accounting of school facility fees. Superintendent, do you want to introduce this item?
Sure. The purpose of this item is to secure the board's approval regarding a resolution for the annual accounting for our school facilities fees. And, and Dora Sue, if you don't mind, I think, unless she's still talking to, Dora Sue? Thank you very much. Thank you. Dora Sue's going to go ahead and present this item for us.
And before you begin, Ms. Sue, thank you as well from me and, and I think, and the rest of the board, I'm sure, for your good work on the audit to get us a very clean bill of health. Why don't you hold on a second while we're using, using our IT director, Superintendent Rubio, to make sure we can push the right button.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here tonight to present the developer fee report.
Why don't you give the projector a second to I think it's hopefully warming up. Superintendent Rubio, can you, can you remove the, oh, okay, it's gone. There we go. All right.
All right. The law requires the school district that collect the developer fees to make an annual accounting of those fees available after closing the book within a hundred and eighty days, a hundred and eighty days after closing the book. And this report that we are going to go over tonight is going to cover the fees collected, the spent, and also the interest accrued in that account for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen. And developer fees, they can be, there are restrictions on the spending of the developer fees. Basically, what I'm trying to say on this slide is, is only available for construction or reconstruction of school facilities, or any cause associated with conducting any study or finding or determination required as part of the process to adopt the developer fee, or any cause for administering the fee, cause associated with conducting any meeting required for imposing the fee. But the developer fees cannot be spent on any regular maintenance or routine repairs. And it cannot be spent on any of the aspartus work other than that incidental to the construction or reconstruction, or any of the deferred maintenance expenses. We cannot use it under the developer fees. And the beginning balance of the developer fee, as you can see, is two point one million dollars. We collected the, the fees in thirteen, fourteen total to six thousand dollars, and we spent thirty-one thousand last year. Now, the fund balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, for the developer fees is two point one six million dollars. So, the staff is asking the board to accept the developer fee report as required by the law. So, any questions?
Member Dice?
You know, I've, I've just been here too long, folks. Good evening, Dora Sue. Thank you for the presentation. Just had a question about, are there dollars that are in our, I know we have five years in which once we collect that we must spend, and what that number is? If you can draw, I, I know you have supporting, but I couldn't tell.
Actually, on the exhibit that Lisa attached to the board item, you can see, I believe it's on Exhibit A. On the second page of the Exhibit A, I believe I highlighted the amount that we are supposed to spend within the five years limit. So, basically, for those that, who do not know about the five-year limit is the, the first deposit that you received on your developer fees, you do have five years from that first deposit that you made to spend the money. Otherwise, the state can go back and come to you, and you are supposed to get a full refund back to the state. So, that's why it's critical to track those money and making sure that they are spent within the time limit. And as of this year, year fourteen, fifteen, the total amount that we have to spend in order to within the, to make, to meet the five-years time limit is three hundred and seventy-four thousand. And it's showing on the second page of your Exhibit A.
Can you go back two slides?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble finding that.
If you hit the backspace key twice, it'll go back two slides.
Oh, the exhibit is, the exhibit is part of the resolution, I think, page five.
Hit the escape button now.
Oh, arrow key, maybe?
Oh, right there, perfect. I miscounted if that was only one. So, I, just, something stuck out to me here. If we have a balance of two point one million and we're collecting sixty-three hundred a year, is that-
For last year.
For last year. What's typical that we collect?
Well, the year before, we collected over a million dollars. So, the numbers can, can change from year to year.
Okay.
And actually, there was an email communication between the city and the school district. And I get a confirmation actually from the city. They are supposed to spend, I mean, they are supposed to send in the fees once they collect it for the school district every quarter of the year. But there are time, if there is no permits turning, then there is no money to be sent to the school district. And just for those one that who do not know, the city is the one that collecting the developer fees for Emory School District. And there is a three percent service fee for handling the fee collection.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Member Pats, the this is a one-time fee. The developer pays when they get their building permit, and it fluctuates wildly depending on the economy and if anyone's building.
Yeah, I just, it's, I, I suspected it fluctuated, but that's a huge-
Oh, yeah.
You know, and-
Can, zero to two million?
And I can't, you know, I-
Regarding the amount, the two point one million, or thereabouts, is that been accounted for in the budget for the, for the new ECL as far as a line item, or is that just basically a separate reserve for however we want to spend the money?
Right...
Right now, I'm sorry, I was just going to interrupt, if I may. It is not included in the current project budget of the ECL project.
Right now, the money is actually accounted in the Fund Twenty-Five.
Separately.
Separately, by itself, but as, if you see all the prior year resolution that passed by the board on the developer fee, you will see the purpose of this fee is going to be fund the ECL project.
So, that is what the documents say, that we're gonna, we have to identify the public improvement that we're making. It indicates ECL. So it is a question I had, is this, is this money that we've already dedicated to ECL, or is it money we can use?
It is not dedicated to ECL in general.
In the current budget.
In the current budget, no.
Yeah.
No. Is that, Doris Sue, is that what you just were saying?
Well, the way on the book is showing under a separate fund. The ECL is Fund Twenty-One, but the developer fee is Fund Twenty-Five. It's keeping the book separate from the ECL construction. But I believe I went through several years' resolutions that, that already approved by the board and so on. I see on the exhibit, very specific on the resolution and the exhibit, it did mention ECL on the developer fee, so they can be used for construction purposes.
So it's one of the type of items. It may be one of the amendments, Doris Sue, that you're referring to when the school district voted to increase the percentage. Is that possible, what you're referring to? Did we, did we have amendments in the past to regarding the percentage for, is that, am I getting confused with? I think, didn't, we had some amendments in the past as a school district to move up to the state-allowed percentage, I think, correct?
Okay, that's a separate issue.
Those are other amendments, okay.
But what I'm seeing in here is the developer fees, if you have a specific purpose for using the funds, the developer fees have more restrictive. You have to meet certain criteria. You cannot just spend it on everything. You have to meet the criteria in order to use the fund. But part of what the resolution that been put through by the board, they are allowing the developer fees to be used on the ECL project. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Yeah. And in regarding to what you just said, raising the rate to the state limit, that is another project that we have to look into, because with our current status, I do need to spend some time to see even, is it worthwhile to go in to do another justification study to raise the rate? Because with our declining enrollment status right now that we're having, we do have unspent capacity of, on the facilities at this time. May not even justify us to raise the rate. And maybe that's the reason why we are still sitting at the two thousand and eight rate.
So we, can you explain a little how that works, that one has to do a study to justify...
From what I know...
Hold on, let me finish the question. So the rates change annually, and you can only change as a district if, if you do a study to justify why you need to change? And if that's the case, what, what are the criteria for being able to justify?
The State Allocation Board, they will update the rate every two years, matching the inflation. Right now, the rate that Emory is charging is still at the two thousand and eight rate, which is two ninety-seven per square foot for residential versus what's out there, I think is three thirty-six or three thirty-seven out there. So, but then, in order to increase your rate, you have to do a justification study. And on your justification study, you have to show there is a link between the new development is going to impact with new students coming into your school district, that affecting the capacity of your school district. But now, as I said, we are in declining enrollment. We might not even have any SS capacity at the time. And if we cannot justify that link, that relationship, maybe then we cannot just increase the rate. So this is another conversation that I need to have, maybe some kind of consulting firm? Maybe it's not even worth for us to go into trying to do another justification study and then go through the process of increasing the rate at this time. I don't know yet. It is something that I will follow through.
Okay. And we've, Member Dice would know best, I think, but we've used a consulting firm in the past for this kind of study. Is it the same folks that did the parcel tax analyses and...
No. I think, I don't know if it's the same group, but it is definitely tied to what, because most of it is data driven by our demographic, it's like a demographic study. So the demographics, as well as what the city may have coming online in terms of projects that would be anticipated, so...
And it looks like this money can be used for those studies.
Right, right.
Correct.
Right. But I think, I do know once, at some point, and I don't know how often, but the district would at least get, you know, in terms of trying to figure out whether it's worth it to, but know, have a sense of how many, what projects are coming online, or if there's even, you know, options. Because we're talking about redevelopment, you know, RDA days compared to now. And so we, I won't say Emeryville is completely landlocked, I mean, you know, in terms of projects, but there may be such a smaller set of buildings coming online that, you know, well, before, we had a long list, there was like an Excel file of all these different projects, and I just don't know where that is, if, do we have as many projects coming online, but...
I, as far as I know, there were two studies made. One is in two thousand and ten, and the other one is in two thousand and twelve. I tried to question about why were the rates not updated when we did the studies at those times? So I guess, from a reliable source, he was telling me that because at that time, all the prior CBOs did not, just did not put in the proposal to the board. So right now, I'm working with a consultant. I'm, I'm supposed to send him the prior year's studies and have him to even make his expert opinion on whether we are likely to get a rate increase. If not, then we are not going through another study.
Let me ask a different question. Doris Sue, do you know, it might be interesting for us to find out, how many school districts collect their fees directly? When people file building permits, and how many have another entity like the city? It just seems strange to me that we have the city collecting this and taking three percent every time.
That's a really long, I just...
Is there a history on that one?
It's a, it's been a great conversation. It's been asked maybe every year I've been sitting here. And, and I couldn't even tell you right now the why and the rationale, but there had to, I don't know if it's the administration, I don't know if it's how, how it's orchestrated, a builder is going, or a developer is going to the city and doing the paperwork, and they're not having to come to our office and do it. So I don't know if it was a lot of that, the nuances in terms of how they have to write a check here and then write a check there. So the city was doing all of it like a one-stop shop, so...
I was curious, because I thought most school districts collected this directly.
Yeah, that's been an interest, and we've always had that question.
Okay.
That's the answer we got back to you.
And actually, all the prior bigger employer or school districts that I work for, they collect the developer fees directly. They do, they do not go through the city.
So maybe that's something you can look into and bring to the Finance Committee?
Uh...
Normally, I'd say we want to do things ourselves, but we're talking about three percent, and so the amount of staff time to collect sixty-three hundred dollars, you know, on the two million years, I'm all for it.
Yeah, what a two-million-year.
But, again, I don't know that we, I mean, that, I think on the two-million-year, that becomes a full-time job. And so I, I'm concerned that, I think, three percent is not, I don't know that the city's gouging us, is I guess my comment. I, I, I don't know that I want developers anywhere near our district office, that's just me. So filling out paperwork and such, I think the pay-through through the city is, doesn't seem to be cost prohibitive to me. That's, again, my opinion.
No, that's six thousand, I think it makes sense.
Huh?
That's six thousand dollars, Tyler, yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I mean, do you want to start processing developer permits?
If there's going to be new buildings in Emeryville, I might.
I guess it's, as a member of the Finance Committee, I'd be curious to know the answer in if and how.
Just to answer your, your question, John, I, as far as what I know, I think there was already a long conversation between the city and the district about the three percent service fee, whether it should be done here directly. If I don't get a clear position from the board, I would not even proceed with doing any homework on it, because I was told there was a particular reason why it was done in the city, not with the school district, so...
So I guess, for starters, I, clear direction that if you could find out what that reason is, because this board doesn't currently know what that reason is, and I think we would like to know. And then we can figure out if we want to do anything about it.
And Doris Sue, I would like to know how many school districts in Alameda County collect their own versus another entity. Do we have an easy way to find that out from the county?
I could question the county on this one.
Okay, I'd be curious.
So do you have the resolution and Exhibit A and B in front of you?
I don't, but Lisa, do you have a copy that I can look at now?
I do have some specific questions about it.
All right.
So page four, four, where's that? I guess that's Exhibit A, the first page of Exhibit A. F, E, S. same page, what the public improvement is, that these funds are going to be expended on? And the answer is C attachment, and then there's no explanation in the attachment of what the public improvement is. I think it's, it's, it's in B, right, where we reference ECL? But it's not in the attachment to Exhibit A. Are you following me, Ms. Sue?
Are you on Exhibit A or B?
Yes, so looking at Exhibit A.
Okay.
We're required both by the resolution, and then if you look at page four of Exhibit A, at G, it's, we're required to identify what the public improvement is. And we don't do that anywhere in Exhibit A.
On G is, if I'm reading the item G on Exhibit A, right, it kind of said into fund transfer, and I don't think there is any into fund transfer for thirteen fourteen fiscal year.
Okay. All right, then it's E, you're right. An identification of each public improvement on which fees were expended, and the amount of the expenditures of each improvement, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see how we identified the public improvement.
But I just want a clarification, if I could. So this is for fees that were already expended, though, correct? Not to be expended?
That's a good question for Doris. Is that, is that all we're...
Those are the fees that we already spent. If you're talking about...
Are you talking about this...
Spreadsheet, where it said expenditures. So those are the fees that we already spent. So if you look at thirteen fourteen, we spent thirty-one thousand dollars.
On what, though?
See, I, I believe the way this format was done, which already set it up for years, again, I believe the whole thirty-one thousand is for the ECL, because we do not have any other projects that we, outstanding, that we're doing besides the ECL project. But what I could do then, I could go back to the office and run you the expenditure detail report. But I believe the way that it was set up this way by Emory is only my personal opinion. I think at this time, our one and only one project that we have for facilities is the ECL. So if I'm taking these number right, it's telling me the whole thirty-one thousand dollars that we spent in the developer fees for the ECL project.
So I'm asking you to confirm that, and if that is the case, then amend Exhibit A to identify that all of the fees spent were for ECL.
Okay, I will.
So that, that is disclosed as required. The, same page, on page four of Exhibit A, whoops, at F, the, an identification of the approximate date by which the construction of the public improvement will commence. I think we, we didn't know that date in years past, perhaps, where you might have, but we didn't, haven't we commenced construction at ECL now, so shouldn't that be identified? I'm looking at F. The district has not made the reference determination, is what the answer is, which might have been correct in previous years.
On this one, it's asking you the commencement day of your public improvement project. In this case, yes, you are correct, the ECL already started. So there must be a date that we already started the ECL?
Yes, Mr. Baker could probably give that to you, Doris, and we can go ahead and fix this.
Okay, yeah.
Except we're approving this now.
No, I don't know.
If you want...
Is there...
Maybe we should have this conversation public. The conversation we're having in private here is, are we approving this tonight? Are we, is this a first reading? Do we need to take action on this? I think we need to take action on it, don't we, today? Because we're within some hundred-and-eighty-day window?
Actually, we are asking the board to approve the resolution and the report as required by the law.
So, so it's six months, right? Do we have, is it, would it be end of this month?
Yeah, what's our deadline, Doris Sue, I guess is the question.
It seems like we've actually missed that date, haven't we?
We closed the book on June thirtieth, and then we're required by law to post the, the data on the website by December twenty-sixth. So we meet that deadline.
So you did do that?
And after that, yes, we did.
Okay.
But all we posted is the spreadsheet that you see on Exhibit A, the first page. Okay, that's what we posted on the website. And then after posting the information, then you have fourteen, I believe you do have fourteen days after the posting to get to the board meeting to get it approved. to get to the board meeting to get it approved.
Yeah, so you would like it approved tonight?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
But then, again, what you just mentioned on item E on Exhibit A, actually, item F on Exhibit A, I will find out the day from John Baker and then fix this.
Yeah, and you were also going to confirm that our expenditure is the date of bend for ECCL and identify that. So we can, we can approve it with amendments. But that is why I'm trying to figure out if there are any other amendments that I might have. On page five of the Exhibit A, I guess it is still, there's a footnote two, which doesn't seem to, I couldn't attach it to anything. Do you see the footnote referencing, we have to spend these funds within five years? This amount represents the remaining unspent funds from collection five previous years. It must be spent in the upcoming year, where is that? Where's the footnote two?
Or is it like a disclaimer?
Yeah.
But I, yeah.
Essentially, we have a rolling account based on the five-year window.
Right, so what's this year's amount? That's why I thought the two somehow maybe got taken out of the text and it's just remaining at the bottom of the page.
Okay, this year is three hundred and seventy-four thousand. And what you can see on the amount is on the following two pages. You see the orange highlighted amount?
Yes.
If you add up those three figures, it will come to roughly to three hundred and seventy-four thousand. And that's the amount that we will be spent, and we have to spend by the end of June.
Okay, and then we have to spend those other amounts in the five thirty-one, one point two million, our recent six thousand.
And actually, to answer you back, the question that you have on regarding the footnote number two.
Yeah.
If you look up the last year one that done by the CBO office, you will see there is an additional column right beside the ending balance. And that is referred to the footnote number two, right there. The reason why I take it out this time, I did my checking, it, it's not quite come to what it should be. So I, I told the staff to delete that column, and what I did is I added the next two pages. And that's how I come up with these three hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Okay, so maybe you could move the footnote two to page seven, which is where you have the highlight.
Okay.
Indicate the highlighted amount above is the amount we need to spend, you know, now.
All right, okay, I will.
Do you even need footnote two? Because this table tells you exactly what the five-year rolling number is.
Except it's not labeled in a way that would tells me that. So if, if there were a title to the table or amount to be spent, somehow indicate, footnote two does it, or it could become text or something, but, but put it where it belongs on the, on the, on the right page. I think that'll help people understand what, what this is. Question for you, and the superintendent, I guess, is looking at sixteen seventeen, where we will have one point two million that we will need to spend, and we've indicated we're spending that on ECCL. We will have built ECCL in six, should we be spending that ahead of time, so we're not having to return that?
Did we?
I, I was going to suggest that we go ahead and bring that to the finance committee to, to look at. It's a good conversation.
Did we decide if we have a deadline to pass this this evening?
I hope we don't.
Because I feel like what we should do is table this and have it come back in a more simplified fashion, so we can approve it, instead of trying to fix it this evening.
I agree. I think just to make it clear, you know, just so it's clear, we walk away knowing it's clear.
Yeah, and before I agree with my own idea, I just want to make sure we don't hurt ourselves doing that. So, Dora Sue, does this have to be approved this evening, or can we wait two weeks?
May I, may I, Dora Sue, you know, I was going to help just for a second. I just noticed everyone, that, you know, the language in the ed code that we have here is that the board must review this within five, fifteen days. So we are reviewing it this evening, Dora Sue, so that would, would that suffice for the moment, until we bring it back?
I, I believe we can do that in the next board meeting.
That would be helpful.
In that case, I move we pull this item.
Because I believe the last one that Mark did was actually done in February.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The, the one last year, the, the last year one, the twelve thirteen that you guys approved, actually was done in February.
Makes sense.
So if he can do it in February, I'm sure we can.
I'm not sure we should use that logic.
That, look.
But I think we're okay.
I second the motion.
So can you, can you repeat the motion, Member Pat?
I just moved that we pull this item and have it returned in two weeks.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Oh, I think you're preempting.
I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President.
It's okay, we're all on the same page.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we're going to have Member Dice a second. Do you want to take a, a roll call, Ms. Tamery?
Do we, do we need a roll call, or we're just pulling it? I'm not sure if we need a roll call. Do we need, do we need a motion, or are we just pulling? We do need a motion?
We already did it.
You made, was that necessary?
Why not?
Oh, I don't know.
Let's roll with it.
Okay.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pat?
Sure.
Member Dice?
Yes.
President Athol?
Yes.
Thank you, Dora.
Thanks, Dora.
Okay. I just want to make sure, what I'm going to make the change is on Exhibit A, item F, where I will put down the date of the starting day of the ECCL construction project. And then I will make a detailed expenditure report to show you the thirty-one thousand dollars that we spent in last year. And is that right?
And, and the footnote, I think, if you didn't say.
The footnote is going to move to the, the other two pages that I created. Is that all we are looking for in here?
Member Pat and Member Dice, those who, who were in favor of it moving, is there, are those corrections? Are there other things that you'd like to?
No, I think it, I think just to make sure it's clear, that would definitely help. And perhaps if there, I mean, if, if time is there, it could be reviewed maybe by the finance committee before. Just to, you know, just to make sure.
I'm going to put Dr. Rubio on the spot. Do you feel you under, you understand what we're asking to have done here and could work with Dora Sue to bring this back in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think we, yes, thank you, Dora. And I, I think we're, we're doing what we need to do, and we will see that item back in two weeks. And we have a finance committee meeting in two weeks, so we can, we can preview it there, and, and you can certainly be in touch with. Superintendent, you can, you can be in touch with Member Dice and I on any questions in the meantime. Moving on, the next item is ECCL update. From Mr. Baker.
Okay, good evening. This is the monthly update for the ECCL project. First things first is our solar mediation phase is now complete and over. All Department of Toxic State Substance Control approvals for solar mediation are complete, including the no further action letter, so we're done. And so that's a big hurdle to, to cross, and that's allowed construction to complete, to, to proceed completely. We received a clean bill of health for building A. If you recall, the raw monitoring report had revealed some unforeseen volatile organics, motor oil, in building A area. We removed those over a period of three months in late two thousand and fourteen. Those were successfully removed, so there's no further monitoring required. Had they been there, had they been occurring, recurring, then we would have needed to install a monitoring system and then a number of other things for the future. We were able to clean that site up completely. There are no schedule impacts to building A. This is largely to degree due to the fact that we had some rain in December and kind of, we caught up with our schedule. So that's good. And just minimal cost impacts to remobilizing the grading contractor, they had to come back to do A, which they actually have now completed. Construction update, the building E seismic upgrade is in progress. And that seismic upgrade consists of bolts and plates to the existing concrete structure, and will, down the road soon here, include some concrete shear walls that are being added. Building E mechanical electrical is well in progress, and I've got some photographs to, to take a look at that progress. Site utilities are in progress throughout the site. We're done with E, we're doing D right now, and the rest will follow. Steel fabrication is in progress for building D in Antioch and in Hayward. The, the, the steel components for E are pretty much complete now. Excavation for building D footing starts soon. They're doing layout right now, and they'll start that in the next couple of weeks. And the prep work for building slabs will start soon. And we'll be, we'll be looking at that, and I'll show you a look at calendar here in a minute here. So we're, we're moving right along, as they say. The good weather has helped tremendously. We had sixteen weather days in December. Again, there are, I think in excess of thirty-five weather days built into the schedule, so there's no delay caused by that, if you will, but it does impact progress of the project. Design update, the pool design is nearly complete. We should have all of our documents for bidding done next week, and pricing for that, all that, that pool renovation back in February. And so we're just doing the final, just the final work on the electrical coordination with the electrical design build subcontractor. And so that should be out to bid for, to pool contractors next week. The health center, we've completed the design changes that have been requested by Lifelong, the operator. Those are now complete. We still have some electrical and data locations to confirm. And importantly, we need to coordinate some of the health center equipment, primarily dental chairs, with Turner. But we're pretty much done with those revisions. The library, we've made some minor revisions to that. There still is not an operator determined for the library. We've talked to the city once a week to see what the progress on that is. Since the library is one of the first portions of the project complete in building D, our time is running short to make any changes. But I think ever, the city and district are pretty confident in the, the design as we have it now. But that's something we're going to be watching closely as, as an operator may or may not be, be brought on board. Every month, I'll show you what we call an eight-week, eight-week look-ed schedule. It shows what the, what we can expect to see over the next couple of months. Like I said, building E, the, the gym seismic work is, is underway, and that's going to be done pretty soon here. The mechanical local plumbing work is well underway, will be done by early February. After that, we're going to start framing. We're framing the new walls and some new floor, flooring in that building. Site utilities for building E are pretty much done. For buildings B and D are underway. Buildings A and C, those will start sometime next week. I think with the weather way it is, let's, we'll probably be on that, on our way there. Building A earthwork, again, that's coming back and finishing, where we had a kind of pause on A. That is, that's now complete. Building D footing excavation is, they've done, started with layout, and that will be done by the end of the month. They're going to place the base rock for the entire field next week, so that entire field will have a base rock, which is big gravel on it. The footing excav, the footing excavations for buildings A, B, and C are going to still start layout next week, and they'll finish that by mid-February. Building D concrete, the slab and footings, is going to take place in, in February. And if all goes well, and so far this is the schedule, we're going to start erecting building D steel at the end of next month. And so that goes up pretty quick, too. One of the, one of the most fun things about when you do steel construction is that that goes up within about two, three weeks. So as it stands now, by March, we will have building D, you'll see all the steel up, so we'll be able to see that from San Pablo. So that'll be a big change.
Now, you tell us periodically, but I can't keep it in my, in my head. Can you just go over which is building A, B, C, D?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, and I, I think what I.
And folks, just tuning in at home might have.
Yes, I, I.
And maybe you should give us just a legend every time you do this.
Yeah, I included the, the overall site plan, I'll, I'll make sure to put that in the updates. Building, and I apologize. Building A is the community building at the corner of Fifty-third and San Pablo. Building B is the administration building for both the district and the city that's along San Pablo. In fact, I actually have a, I actually have, if you want, I can pull up a, a site plan. Building D is the high school, which is at the corner of Forty-seventh and San Pablo. Building C is the K through eight school, that's the interior one of the site that borders the field. And building E is the gym. And if, if anyone would like, I can pull up, I can, I can go through here and pull up a, a plan. So, construction photographs, so here's our, when we, we started last week, we went back after we had DTSC approval in December, where this is the corner, you can see, this is the building A site, again, that's the community building at the corner of Fifty-third and, and, and San Pablo, so they're doing rough grading. This is the grading at that, at that corner of the site, so our grading is now complete throughout the site. This is when they're putting down, they're lime treating the soil, and you put lime. Lime is what you treat the soil with, lime everywhere you have concrete above that, so at the building slabs and also at the flat work. And that, I think now, is complete. This is the staging area, you can see the gym is building E. This is the staging area for all the, the site utilities, so that's all the piping you see there. That's a conduit and sewer piping. This is trenching, this is a near building D, this is electrical trenching that is taking place now. This is the main electrical trench, trench that comes off of, of Forty-seventh and goes into the site. Inside the gym, building E, we're doing the mechanical plumbing work, so we've done trenching through the existing concrete. These are the preassembled components of the underground plumbing that are, are at the site right now. Actually, most of these are installed now. And this shows the installation of those. This is for the, the, the new restrooms and showers within that building. And you can see then these, those are placed, and then those will be then backfilled with base rock. And then this will be, the slab will be replaced in that, in those locations. I just want to point out that we're, a milestone here, that all of our, all of those early, this is the, the tabular schedule that the board has seen for quite some time. All of our really kind of pre-construction activities are now complete, all the stuff in the light green. And what we have left is just finishing up the contract, and then the, the, of the move-in activities that take place incrementally. And again, we have three move-in periods. We have a, you'll see at the bottom here, the move-in period for the gym pool will be in July, July through August of this year. For the high school, November through December of this year. And for the other, for the remainder of the project, the K through eight school, the administration building and the community building, March through June of next year.
This stays on track. Other, any questions, comments for Mr. Baker?
I have a question, John. The pool design, what phase is that, or what designation are you using that on your schedule? Is it part of building E?
It's part of building E.
Okay, and where are you at the Division of the State Architectic Approval process?
That is going to be submitted as a construction change directive. And actually, that is going to, we're, we're, we're going to be submitting that at the concurrent to bidding. And that's going to be, so that will be submitted probably at the end of next week to DSA.
Okay, if that's the case, most of the times that you can't start construction until you have DSA approval.
Correct.
How are you planning to do that?
So we've talked to the DSA field administrator, and who's kind of checked, and also who we've talked to, the, the DSA reviewers of the first four, the four increments that have been approved. And they think that that CCD should take about a month. That's what they've told us. And that can change once you get into DSA. But they also confirmed verbally at least that we can do a CCD and not a fifth, a fifth increment.
And then where do you stand with the Health Department review of the pool?
That, that's, that is also going to be. Uh, that, that's, that is also gonna be concurrent to the DSA review. Um, we've discussed what's required for them, but it has not been submitted yet.
And then as far as additional fees regarding DSA review and Health Department, has that been accounted for?
That's, we've budgeted that in our, 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 our pool budget. I do wanna point out, uh, a couple of things is that during the pool design process, the city has decided to change, make some changes to the filtering system. And, uh, also, uh, because we're doing a lot of work at the deck, we're prob, we're building that, we're building out a deck replacement alternate, we'll probably wanna do that. So, uh, we're all very, we're all cognizant of some, of costs of, of our budget on the pool renovation and we're all eager to see how the bids come in. We've, so there's gonna be a bid with a couple of alternates, a filtering, a different filtering system and a deck replacement. But the, 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 the plan for this is again concurrent to bidding. There's three concurrent activities, bidding, DSA review of the C, the, DSA review of the CCD, construction change directive, CCD, and also Health Department review.
Other questions? Comments? Yeah, I, I, I had a thought to pass along to the, probably the members of the facilities committee. And curious to get your, your question, uh, your feedback, Mr. Baker, but the, um, uh, one of the issues we've discussed before has come up for members of the community is the, uh, the playing field and the material and, uh, the little rubber things and the, the health associated with that, which, which haven't been, you know, I think medically proven yet. But, um, anyway, people have, have concerns about. Uh, yeah, I was, I was, um, wandering around at CSBA conference when the trade floor and, 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 you know, ran into many, uh, vendors. At the newest thing is, are these organic, uh, coconut shells and husks and things to use instead of the rubber. More expensive, I think, another hundred, twenty thousand or so and, you know, we don't have that right now in the budget, but we've got some developer fees that we need to spend. You know, maybe, maybe something, you know, I don't even know if time-wise we could do it, but anyway. Wanna pass it along to my colleagues here who are on the committee to look at it, get, get your feedback and maybe Dr. Rubio has.
I have an update for the school board. I was just waiting for the question to see if it would arise.
Okay.
Um, we are going to, uh, completely avoid the debate and we are going with the top of the line available material that has no rubber in it. It won't be the coconut one because we, we found a few fields that, based on some heavy rains, occasionally it happened, it, it became like pa, too pasty and, and they had to redo the fields and it was very expensive. So, but, uh, yeah, there will be no, uh, any type of rubber that comes in contact with students. It's, uh, um, uh, I can't think of the name of it, but it's a, um, uh, virgin material and something else that's, that's mixed. But, uh, there will be no students coming in contact with rubber, which is, has been the norm for a long time, so we're gonna avoid the debate.
Yeah, that's good.
And there is an additional cost of about forty, John, it's about forty-
It's forty cents per square foot. It's an organic, it's an organic mix.
That, that was my question, is organic or?
Where, it's completely organic, uh, mix. It's, it's like the products you're talking about. Um, it's forty cents per foot, which on our project is about, about, um, it'll be about forty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Good, excellent. People will be happy to know that.
Yeah, we thought it might come up.
Okay, alright. That was my question. Any other thoughts, comments? Okay, you have, you have your mission from Member Dice. Yes. Okay, alright, thank you, Mr. Baker. Any public comment on this item? No, okay. Seeing none, we, we'll move to our final, uh, discussion item, which is, uh, a, a simple one. Which is, um, we have a board retreat coming up at the end of the month. Uh, January thirtieth, is it, thirty-first? Whatever that Saturday is.
Yeah, I think it's the thirty-first.
Uh, last Saturday of the month. Uh, and, um, the superintendent and I will be putting together the agenda, but wanted to, um, make that a collaborative effort and get people's feedback, thoughts. Uh, you can throw stuff out now, you can certainly email, um, Superintendent and me between, um, well, don't, don't do it the day before, but, you know, a week or so. Between now and a week or so before. Any, any thoughts, uh, I can, well, I can tell you, we're certainly gonna talk about division, divisioning process that, um, Superintendent and, and the members of the community going through. I, I'd like to talk about LCFF and, and how we're gonna comply with that and do that engagement this year and, um, and, uh, and, and I'd like to talk about, as a board, about the calendar of events, just sort of like an annual calendar of when, when things come up and what, what to expect on board meetings. And so people can, you know, add items now on the calendar if, if we know about them and know when, when they're gonna do it. Those are the three things that I, and, and, and typically, since we have a new board member and, um, maybe two, since, I don't know how much we covered at our retreat in August. But we, seems usually January, we do the kinda board handbook, protocol kinds of, uh, so the, the, those would be my topics, candidates for topics that I would throw out. Other thoughts, if you have any at the moment?
I'll throw one out. We are, we are aware of some upcoming, uh, software changes to Agenda Online, so we may wanna add a small, uh, item regarding, uh, training, uh, for how we're gonna be accessing that and looking at that. But there's, I, the changes, I think, are significant, so we'll have to, we may need to put that on the agenda as a, or a possible agenda topic.
I think it'd be really helpful to start having a discussion about enrollment and our numbers and projections and what we can do to facilitate changing the direction it's been headed in.
Okay. Good suggestion, um, and I know that topic did come up in the visioning conversation, so. Alright, any, any other thoughts bubbling up at the moment? Okay, those are some good suggestions. Uh, and as I said, if, if other thoughts come to you, email, uh, Superintendent and myself.
Um, if I may interrupt for a moment. I did notice we, we missed an item, uh, item four in the consent calendar, so we, we might wanna go back now at this point to-
We didn't, no, I thought we did one and four together.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, we did, we did? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, oh, thank you.
It's okay.
Thanks for staying. Thanks for staying.
Yeah, very excited about the, uh, field trip.
I think there was no comment on it, so I think I, I assumed, I thought there was a, thank you for your efficiency.
We're all very for field trips.
No controversy.
Okay, any, uh, board reports or announcements?
Well, I was just gonna say, I attended the city schools meeting last Thursday alone and, uh, and so, uh, I'll just say that again, alone, but, um, no. But, uh, in that meeting, Scott Donahue is the, um, uh, city co-chair. And, um, at the next meeting, we hope to, um, install the school board's co-chair. Um, in addition, that meeting, enrollment came up in just the terms of, um, a report the, um, city council is interested in, which, you know, all of us are interested in. So, um, one major area which I absolutely echo is, um, looking at, and actually Superintendent, um, brought up the desire to look at the purpose of that organization or that committee. And, um, in addition, uh, there's definitely a lot of support for, 'cause to orient all the new people, city school, to orient everybody to what it's, what, where did it come from and, you know, and why? And also to note that it's a governing body that is tied dramatically to the joint occupancy agreement, so, and some of those pieces. So, um, I think it's a great time because we do have new members on council and new members on board. And definitely new city manager and superintendent, so it's a great conversation that we could look forward to, likely at the next meeting. Um, and I also brought up frequency because this is not a district project, it's not a city project, it's a joint project. And so, um, I felt that it's really important for, um, and I voiced it, that, um, we need to make sure both bodies are on the same page and not making decisions or, um, having thoughts in silos. So, um, the hope is to actually have more meetings, um, sorry, but more meetings. Quarterly is not working, in my opinion, so, um, I think we're a little too far apart in understanding of what's going on. So, um, that is some of the areas that will hopefully be brought forward in a meeting, um, soon, not in April, sooner than April. Um, and also the note, Cindy Montero has, uh, has retired from the city, so, um, they are looking for a community services director. And she, um, she's no longer a part of that, you know, that committee or that team, staff team, um, from the city side as it relates to ECCL. So, um, you know, just that, keep that in mind, um, but really good meeting, other than that, it was about forty-five minutes. So thanks for your, your not being there, it helped, I guess.
Thank you for that and, yeah, I, I know for myself and probably, um, happened to others, that it's in my calendar for the first Thursday of the month, which, which was January first and New Year's Day. And it did not get, it did not get changed to, when, when the actual meeting itself got changed to the second Thursday.
It's okay.
So we appreciate your, uh, your hanging out. It, it, has the city identified a replacement for Cindy Montero, even in terms of contact for the superintendent? I mean, just the city manager snapping up?
No, they are, um, vigorously reviewing applicants and interviewing, I think, my understanding.
And in the meantime, if you need to talk, you go to the city manager?
Well, they have also convinced Cindy Montero. I do see the, the city manager every Monday morning, but Cindy is, uh, staying on longer than she originally planned, so. She's on extended loan right now, I think.
And she says she's heading to Florida, so, watch out.
Okay, bring it, other, other board reports?
I just have a quick announcement, um, that I'm sure everybody is aware that there's a movie out right now called Selma. Very important, uh, topic about the march from Selma to Montgomery and huge civil rights movement moment. Many theaters, um, including the AMC at Bay Street, are allowing seventh, eighth, and ninth graders to go for free if they show their student ID. Um, I know a seventh grade young lady who saw it recently and she, um, it is very intense and very, um, at, at times can be very violent. I have not seen it personally, 'cause if you know me, I will get kicked out of the theater for crying too loudly, so I'm waiting for it to come out when I can see it at home. But, um, this seventh grade young lady said it was, she wants to see it again, she was very moved, she said it was very powerful, um, very good movie. So it's just something that I think is very important for our students and they can go and see it for free, very close by, all they need is their student ID, seventh, eighth, or ninth grade students, so.
Member Pats?
So, in one of the emails from Dr. Rubio to the board, there was some discussion about a, a trip to Washington and I wanna take this time to talk to you. I think spending district funds, even if they're allocated for such things at this time, when we're looking at so many budget challenges, it's not the best use of the money. It doesn't have a direct impact on the classroom and I think it's really, I don't know if the trip is still planned or not, but I really don't think it's the time for us to be taking junkets on the district dime. And so I think I'm, I'm sort of asking that we forego it as it was done last year and really focus on balancing our budget, making sure we meet our obligations and not spending district funds. Oh, what's the word I'm looking for, chasing other funds at this time. So it's just my statement.
Appreciate, appreciate that. Noted. Member Miriam, do you have any announcements?
None at this time.
Okay.
Uh, in, in the theme of, um, educational movies, uh, there, there's a movie coming out, uh, I think it comes to the Bay Area this Friday called Spare Parts, which, which I recommend. It's written by a friend of mine.
Oh.
Uh, the husband of a, a very close colleague, a long-time work colleague. Uh, it is about a story he wrote for Wire that, that's now turned into a book and a movie, get the book as well. Um, Spare Parts chronicles a group of immigrant students in Arizona who, um, entered a robotics contest and beat MIT students. And then had trouble with their immigration.
The misfortune of living in Arizona.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
And so have had, had lots of trouble.
Uh, I think, I think it's, uh, it's another good education movie to be seen in these days. Okay, uh, moving on, I think, uh, calendar review is, uh, just, we have another regular board meeting on, uh, January twenty-eighth. The Superintendent's Finance Committee will be meeting, uh, I thi, I think we said four forty-five, not five, but four forty-five, uh, on January twenty-eighth, prior to the meeting. The facilities committee has no January meeting, apparently, 'cause there's an MLK holiday and no school on January nineteenth. Um, and, uh, there it is, our ES, uh, our semi-annual board retreat is January thirty-first at eight thirty AM at Ralph Hawley. And that's open to the public. Yeah. Um, I guess that's what it is. Who set that time? Who set that time? Yeah. Alright, well, it's currently scheduled at eight thirty, let's just say that, alright? And, uh, we, um, I have since finalized the second, uh, uh, round of teacher development days that, uh, the superintendent negotiated with, uh, the union at the beginning of the year. And those, we did three days in October and now, um, uh, the, the days five and, uh, the second two days will be February fifth and sixth. No school for students in those days and the city will be providing, um, um, childcare through the, um, the rec center. For thirty dollars a day?
Um, I believe that's correct if they're not a, um, a member already, if they're a member, um, I think, I, I'm, I'm not sure off the hand of the details. I know we did have it in a letter that would come to parents, um, and then, uh, it's kindergarten, uh, through eighth grade.
Yeah, right. Okay, alright, uh, we are now going to, uh, convene to a closed session and, uh, the open session is closed.